I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we will square in, Lois Brissette, if you come forward, Lois.
Do you, Lois Brissette, who has been elected as District 4 Alderperson in and for the city of Clintonville in Wapaka County but have not entered upon the duties thereof, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and harshly discharge the duties of this office to the best of your ability for the help of God? I do.
Thank you, Cliff Johnson, and congratulations, Lois. I would like to now officially call a meeting to order, and roll call, please. Seiner, Crowe.
Here.
Stumrath.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Steenbach.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
Brissette.
Here.
Schleih.
Here.
Dornick. Dornick and Seiner are excused. Before you approve the agenda, I would like to move the following items: 9A, B, and C after 16H. Move 8D, close session after 16H. And move 14E, close session after 16H. May I have motion to approve, Lois?
I just have a question regarding the adjournment to close session regarding the Rose publications. That's the official city newspaper that I would like to see that be discussed in public because they have accepted taxpayer money to do work for the city, so I would expect that that be discussed in open session.
Okay. Any other discussion? Does the city attorney? Mary Beth, does the city attorney have any opinion on that?
The reason for it being in close session has nothing to do with whether there are official city newspapers or not. It has to do with litigation, which we may or may not become involved.
Well, I haven't... But if I may, I'm just concerned about litigation, and I just think that if there's any litigation that this city really should let it be known in public and discussed in public, particularly if it's any kind of litigation.
As with all litigation, we generally don't discuss it in public, especially if it's not present and happening.
Okay, but I'm just concerned because, you know, we have the public, and I think that they have the right to know when the city is going to be engaging or is there's going to be any kind of concern about litigation that should really be discussed. At least in my opinion, it should be summarized or somehow given to relate to the public so that there's not conjectures and, you know, speculations.
Thank you, Lois. Any other discussion? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So will.
Second?
Oh, second, did I move all that stuff to the end? I don't know if that was...
So we moved on 9A, B, and C.
12H, 16H.
Then 8D, close session after, well, the 16H in line, as it was on the agenda. So, and then the 14E, close session after 16. So after 16, it'll be 9, 8, and then 14. Okay. Okay. Yes. Notice that the there is in the citizens forum on the agenda? It's there, number six. Oh, I see, it's a little... Okay. Okay. A motion has been made by Keister, second by Schleih, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which is correspondence. In page one and two of your packet is the monthly letter from Dave Steele for the Wapaka County Economic Development Corps. And if you haven't read it, please take some time. It talks about how many new jobs have been, became during the last year. He states that 240,000 new jobs were made available, and we have that many more people working. So if you have time, please read the whole article. At this time, we'll move on to citizens forum. This is a chance for citizens to make comments. Please be courteous at all times. Remember that this is not meant to be an opportunity to make personal attacks on any city official. No action or lengthy discussions can take place as a result of comments made at this time. Are there any citizens that would like to come forward? If you would state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Donna Lutter. I live at 93 13th Street. First of all, I'd like to walk a dirty back. I missed you.
Thank you.
Your mics aren't working again. April, yours isn't. I don't mean this as a personal attack on you, but...
I can move it closer.
Well, that and you need to say something into it, not...
Over here. I do, I have a cold, so I'm trying, I'm struggling to speak loudly, so I will move it closer.
Yeah. And I think I'm the one that's going to control everybody now with the mics because the city spent a lot of money on those, and if we can't hear the board, there was no point in spending that money. So we'd like to hear you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come forward? Rochelle? State your name and address, please.
Rochelle Laude, E 9189 Laude Road, Clintonville. I read in the paper where Ms. Brissette was sworn in this past Tuesday morning, okay? And now she was sworn in again, and I'd like to know, was this official? And if it was, why was it done earlier?
Lois was sworn in last week, and this was just courtesy to the council to see the squaring in tonight. It was official, she was sworn in by an attorney. Okay. You're welcome. Anyone else come to, wants to speak? I see a hand, a mic, please come forward.
I would like to start off by saying that the term used by the Chronicle that the mayor was...
One moment, please, would you state your name?
Oh, Miss McCreeger, N 11478, Highway D, Clintonville.
Thank you.
I would like to start out by saying the term used by the Chronicle that the mayor was AWOL is uncalled for, divisive, and shows lack of any compassion. I know some of you here approve of those words as I read what is on the agenda. First of all, you are, you are to be discussing, you are not to be discussing the health issues of the mayor. Like the old saying goes, those who live in glass houses should not throw stones. You do not hire the mayor, you are not her boss, this is not your job. You are so wrong in your thinking, it appears to me that you are bordering on delusional. I really don't think you can tell the difference of what is good for the city and what is bad for the city. Stop acting like a ten-year-old bully and start, and I do mean start, doing what you were elected to do. Some of you have done nothing but hurt this city since you were elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else care to come forward and speak? I saw a hand, yes, please. State your name and address.
Julie Stumrath, 260 1st Street. This is my first time, first meeting. Members of the council, Madam Mayor, I see on the agenda for this evening, ethics, discussion about ethics and the mayor. Back in October, the personnel committee convened to discuss ethics. According to the videotape, a quorum of the city council sat at this meeting, which was an illegal quorum by law. The president, who was the acting mayor at the time, the city attorney, nothing was done to stop this meeting, and now you want to discuss ethics again. I want you to listen carefully. I don't just speak for myself, there are many others who wish to remain anonymous. I'm thoroughly disgusted how this council, and my husband told me not to say the being of six, so I'll leave it out from now on, has made this community into a laughing stock of the state. You've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on a wild goose chase to find wrongdoing on part of our previous city administrator. You found nothing, but you wore her down and she resigned. With our competent city administrator gone, who worked 24/7 and had her fingers on the pulse, made sure the city functioned smoothly, and saw to it that people did their jobs. Unlike what happened around Thanksgiving, one of our first snowstorms, there were county workers that made comments of how terrible our streets were, especially the highway. There was nobody to get the men out there to plow the streets because the department head was out of town. Have to bear with me here, I kind of go wrong. Anyways. She helped in building our reserve fund of 1.2 million dollars. Alas, she is gone now, and this city is not as fluid flowing as it once was. There's a great sucking sound of money, tax beer money, that's driving right out of Clintonville to the interim city administrator, to the $275 an hour who lives in the valley and who has not acclimated to our city. I believe both Mr. Dornick and Mr. Seiner tried to inform that the reserve did not have 1.7 million in it, but because that info came from our previous city administrator, well, what did she know? Anyway, this council mainly, blank, blank, didn't want to do their due diligence and balance the budget. No, I'm sure you clapped your hands and said, "We'll just take $500,000," not sure of the exact amount, from the rainy day fund. I am sure you just can't wait to spend that money. For instance, cutting out many unneeded streetlights was a large cost savings. So now, instead of just reinstating a small percentage of the complainant areas, no, let's just install them all back. For the record, the light that is dark to the north of my house can stay that way. I don't want it shining in my bedroom window. Our city is not unsafe. Then reboot, switch to LED. How long will it take to recoup those costs? This money, I guess, is coming out of the general fund. Before you know it, this city will not have reserve fund left. We'll end up, and this is just for instance, like the ambulance, they spent their funds down to zero and needed surrounding cities to pitch in. I believe Clintonville's share was in the ballpark of $20,000, and I believe that may be a low ball, but I'm not sure. I didn't look up everything exactly. When you spend our fund down, what next? Raise the taxes? I have lived here for 11 years, and I must say, taxes have stayed fairly constant, consistent, and previous city administrators played a big role in that, big part in that role to the tune of $35 an hour. More money that is driving or flying out of Clintonville, $150 an hour for accounting firm because we no longer have a financial accounting person. That same person who left the accounting position, forgive me if I don't know the name of her exact title, was, is now doing city, or utility billing on off-hours, and which is part-time, to the tune of $75 an hour. And you had the audacity to try and illegally block up and complain about $2,500 for a recall? Kind of hypocritical, isn't it? Now you not only have a severance package for the previous city administrator to pay, which, by the way, the city saved money not going to court, but you have entangled the city in a lawsuit with the previous city attorney. This council breaks laws willy-nilly. Judy knew, per the city charter, we had to have a city attorney. You tabled the vote, so she appointed him. Then you hired April. That was illegal. Here, more rule slash law-breaking committee meetings. If a council member is not on a committee and not invited to attend the meeting, then you sit in the citizens section and you only speak when the public time period is. Don't have the right to speak throughout the meeting just because you're a council member. Robert's rules of order are not always followed. Try reading up on those rules of order. Lastly, garbage pickup, we have contractors for that, and we need to save the money, the city money, as you can see by our current budget situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come forward and speak? Yes.
Brad Rokus, 213 North Clinton Avenue. Just kind of wanted to say, welcome back, Judy. We've missed you. Lois, congratulations on a historic election, the first recall the city's ever had. And I think the members that were elected last April should take that as kind of fair warning that it's time to shape up or the citizens will ship you out. It may have been the first, but I don't necessarily think it's the last. So I hope we can all work together, and we still have a lot of, a lot of work to do on this next year's budget. And we need some cooperation, we need some open minds, and we need some hard work. None of the decisions that are going to be made are popular, are going to be popular, but they need to be made, and you all folks are the ones that were elected to do those and not just take from that undesignedated fund and kick the can down for the next council. We've got work to do, and we all need to work together to accomplish it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen wish to come forward? Anyone else? Last call. Anyone else care to come forward? Seeing none, we will close citizens forum. We'll move on to the examination of the minutes for November 11th, 18th, and 24th. The 11th and 24th were in your packet, and the 18th is in the information that was given to you on the table. Mary Beth. I move approval of the minutes from those four sessions. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Three sessions. Motion by Keister, second by Wilson, to approve the minutes for November 11th, 18th, and 24th. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. At this time, we will recognize employees that have five, 10, 15, 20, and 35 years with this city. And as, when I finish reading a little bit about you, if you'll come forward, we'll give you your certificate, and I'll come up to the podium there, so... This is always a great time of the year when we can recognize our employees. We'll start, of course, with our five-year employees, and our first one is Judith Jankie Crossing-Garrett. Judy started her employment with the Clintonville Police Department on January 12, 2009. She has been assigned the eighth in South Clinton intersection by Rexford Longfellow and St. Martin's Schools. Judy does an excellent job controlling traffic and making the crossings safe for our young students. Judy, if you'd... Next, we'll have Craig Camkey, police officer. Craig began his law enforcement career with the Clintonville Police Department on March 2nd of 2009 as a part-time patrol officer. He was promoted to full-time status on September 14th of 2012, and currently works second shift, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m. Craig also serves as an evidence officer for the department. Prior to coming to Clintonville, Craig was employed as a police officer with the Monawney Tribal Police and as a surveyor with Nordine and Associates. Craig has a bachelor of science degree from UW-Plattville, and was, he was on the dean's list three years and the chancellor's list in his final year. Craig was certified as a police officer in 2008 from NWTC, where he also received training and certifications in standard field severity testing, firearms, and tasers. Craig? And our next officer is Matthew Wright. Matt Kim at Clintonville Police Department on March 7, 2009, as a part-time patrol officer. He was promoted to full-time status on July 9 of 2012. Matt works the 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. shift, and also serves as a member of the intra-county emergency response team, SWAT, as a sniper. Prior to coming to Clintonville, Matt served three tours of duty in Iraq with the United States Army, 82nd Airborne Division. During his tours, Matt received nine medals of commendation in service. While attending criminal justice law enforcement training, Matt worked part-time for the Alagami County Sheriff's Department as a corrections officer and the Grand Shoot Police Department as a part-time police officer. Matt has an associate degree in criminal justice from Fox Valley Tech and a bachelor's degree from UW-Oshkosh in leadership and organizational development. Matt also has training and certifications in police radar operations, TASER certification, investigations, drug identification certification, and emergency medical first responding training. Now we will move on to the tenure. We have one employee, Rob Thorne, fireman. Rob is currently an interim engineer helping to fill open engineering vacancies on the fire department as he prepares to complete training related to driving and pumping of apparatus equipment. Rob returned to the Clintonville Fire Department at a critical time to help fill vacancies and is greatly appreciated by the fire department for his commitments and also the city of Clintonville. Congratulations and thank you, Chris. We have two 15-year employees. Andy Vegas, fireman. Andy currently holds the position as Assistant Chief of the Clintonville Fire Department. The current responsibilities, duties as an Assistant Chief require his initial assessment of manpower and equipment needs as well as preparing incoming crews to the fire conditions. Andy continues to engage interest with MABAS, which is Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, to help in emergency preparation as well as fire investigation to help in determining cause and origin. Tabitha Shane. Okay. She's not here this evening. She's a police clerk dispatcher. Tabitha started as a part-time clerk dispatcher for the police department on October 13, 1999, and was promoted to full-time status on May 15 of 2001. Tabitha has prior training and certification in the Department of Justice, Prime Information Bureau's, timed system operation, basic telecommunicator and support staff training, and advanced telecommunicator training. Tabitha is known for her ability to handle multiple situations at once, and her work ethic is second to none. Tabitha always strives to provide service to our community and help people in any way she can. Tabitha has received several letters of appreciation from citizens she has dealt with during the course of her duties, and we'll see that tab gets us tomorrow. All right, now we'll go on to our 20-years, and we have three. Craig Beverness, our first patrol sergeant. Craig came to the Clintonville Police Department on July 14 of 1994 as a part-time patrol officer. He was promoted to full-time status on May 1, 1995, and then promoted to patrol sergeant on October 9, 2012. Craig currently serves as shift supervisor from 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Craig also serves as supervisor of the police department's evidence rooms. Prior to coming to Clintonville, Craig was a partner in Beverness Construction with his family. Craig also served as a reserve deputy for the Wapaka County Sheriff's Department. Craig obtained his associate degree in criminal justice in 1924 with Fox Valley Tech. Craig has training and certification in critical incident response to terrorist attacks, domestic abuse and sexual assault investigations, internet crimes against children, street survival, TASER certification, drug enforcement, tactics, Helmut Stein, drug lab training, narcotics identification training, street crimes, and evidence management training. Craig? Thank you. John Curry, fireman. Is John with us? John currently holds the position of Assistant Chief of the Clintonville Fire Department. John has worked through many positions and ranked in his tenure with the Clintonville Fire Department. The current responsibilities as an Assistant Chief require his initial assessment of manpower and equipment needs as well as preparing incoming crews to the fire conditions. Outside of emergency situations, John assists with fire inspection and prevention duties. And we'll see that John gets his certificate tomorrow also. Ann, Ruth Ann Schultz. Is Ruth Ann here? Ruth Ann is a, works at the library for the past 20 years. She's been a faithful employee of the library. She is known for a bright smile and generous heart among staff and patrons. Besides helping patrons at the front desk, she also ensures the library books continue circulating by handing them when they are broken. She is a true asset to the library, and we are lucky to have her as an employee. And we'll give her her certificate tomorrow also. We have two 35-year employees. First one is Bob Stanislavsky of the Utilities. Is Bob here? No? Okay. Bob started his employment on April 22, 1979 as a meter reader. There have been many changes to the water system since then. The new water tower, main street construction, water treatment plant, new meter reading system, the SCADA system for well and tower controls. The water utility has been recognized by the Wisconsin Rural Water Association for the best tasting water in the state in 2001 and by the Wisconsin Water Association... the best tasting water in the state in 2001 and by the Wisconsin Water Association in 2005. Bob is currently on the Board of Directors for the Wisconsin Rural Water Association, and we appreciate Bob's 35 years of experience. And we will also see that he gets his certificate tomorrow. Our next one is Darrell Teal. If you'd come forward, please, Darrell. In 1979, Darrell went through a few milestones in his life. He was 25 and his wife and Darrell had just welcomed their first daughter into the world. He was working at Simmons in New London. He made $5.10 an hour, which was a lot of money at that time. He wanted something steadier, so he applied for the job in the city of Clintonville. The job was one-half day at wastewater and one-half day at the park department. The pay was $4 per hour. But he had heard that a job with the city was more stable, so he decided to accept the position. After a few years, he ended up working full-time with the park department. In 1988, a full-time labor position at the wastewater plant opened up and he signed up for it. Steve Theis was his manager at that time when he first started with the department. Shortly after he started in wastewater, he knew he wanted to pursue an operator position, so he began studying for DNR certification exams. Over the next couple of years, he obtained his general wastewater certifications as well as eight additional subgrade certifications. He was then a grade four certified operator through the state of Wisconsin. When Brad Rokas was promoted to utility manager, Darrell was promoted to plant foreman. He has been plant foreman ever since. Over the last 35 years, he has worked with coworkers from other departments, college interns, operators, engineers, outside vendors, and several different managers. Overall, his experience has been a good one. Presently, he enjoys his job and working with many awesome coworkers. He feels that he is ready to start the next adventure. He is retiring on January 2nd, 2015. He will miss his job. We will also miss him, but he hopes to see everyone around town. We'll take a short recess from the council meeting so that we can congratulate. And news media, do you want a group picture? Okay. If those that were receiving awards, if you would all come forward in the front here so that they could do a picture, it would be greatly appreciated.
Come on, Darrell. Start it off. There we go.
Well, I was two. I was two years old.
Sing your season.
Hey, Wayne. You got a better camera? Can you take one?
Yeah, I will. Is that good? Check with the boss.
At this time, I'll have Chuck discuss the possible action regarding the audit firm for 2015.
All we're really asking the council for is whether or not you want us to go out for proposals for future audits. I think you've probably had the firm you've been working with for about five or six years, now at least, more than that. And generally, communities like to at least take a look at other audit firms on a five-year It's probably, in my mind, it's too late to make a change for this coming audit for the '14 budget. But if you had some idea that you might want to look at a different audit firm, we should probably start working on RFP and get that out so that you have most of the early part of next year to start considering that and, you know, making a selection. Certainly, your current firm could also submit a proposal under that. So I've had this question asked me by a number of older persons and just thought I'd put it on the agenda and see what happened.
Mary Beth? Refresh us, Chuck. Was this, the auditor did not catch that, the auditor did not catch that misplacing $450,000, or did they?
I think they actually made the transfer. It was a transfer they made and from what we've been able to determine, the employees and staff and both the administrator's office and clerk's office were notified of it.
Okay. Well, I would move that we begin looking for proposals to consider a new auditor for Is there a second?
I would second it.
Motion by Keister, second by Schley, to look for a new auditing firm for 2015. Any discussion? Jeanne?
I guess my comment in looking for one is, I don't understand why there wasn't a paper trail on this $444,000 that they moved. An audit firm just doesn't move money without telling people. I think it wasn't in their, well, not in their, it wasn't proper of them to do it. They should be telling what they're doing. If they're moving money around, they should be telling someone or they should be leaving a paper trail of some sort. They haven't given us any answer for that, have they? Why they moved it?
Peggy?
They do give us the list of their journal entries. They do every year. As for discussion, they did not discuss with me that, the reasoning behind that.
And I just don't think it was in the best interest. It definitely was not in our best interest, that's for certain. Maybe it was when they were doing the books, but in the end, not telling anybody. And then that money being transferred out of the capital and into the, what is that?
The surplus.
The surplus fund is just, I think it was a huge error.
I did have one citizen mention to me that there was a concern that perhaps having more money than was really meant to be in the surplus fund. They do use the surplus fund to look at our bond rating. And this person said to me, could there be any problem that we really inflated our status by having more money in the surplus than we had? So there could have been other implications for us. We certainly weren't trying to do something fraudulent, but there was more money in the surplus fund than should have been. Any other discussion? There being no roll call, please. Crowes?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanback?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Preset?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Motion carries. All voting yes. At this time, Chuck, if you would, give us a little update on the Wisconsin Act 377.
Okay. This was an act that was passed by the legislature and was effective in 2014. And basically, what it did was it raised the weight limits for agricultural traffic on local streets, county highways, town roads, from 80,000 pounds up to 92,000 pounds. And there was a lot of concern about that when it was passed. And there was a, basically, a consortium put together to study this and evaluate it. And a group of people were drawn together in Wapaka County, including your public works manager, who's attended a number of their meetings. And so in Wapaka County, they've made a recommendation that all the local governments except, it's in your packet, accept option F, which basically abides by the rule that was established to allow the weight limit of 92,000 pounds without a special permit. Any agricultural traffic, whether it's combines and grain trucks, manure haulers, that type of thing, anything over that would be required to get a permit from the local unit of government. It's a free permit for the asking, but it allows the local government to be aware of any traffic of that nature through your community that might exceed those weight limits. And in some cases, you may want to require them to take special routes. For example, if they're crossing certain bridges that you have concern about or roads that are maybe in higher danger of being damaged by that type of weight, you can send them on alternate routes through your community based on the permits that are issued. So I'm recommending that you proceed with a motion to accept option F. I also understand that Otage County and Shawnee Counties are recommending the same thing to their municipalities, so this would be a regional thing. And it's basically, this is all set up to be, I think, a positive movement for agriculture and also for roads so that they can live in harmony somewhat. And you'd be surprised, actually, at how many loads are being brought through your community to violate these weight limits. There's quite a bit of it going on. Matter of fact, lies the manure haulers that you're seeing from these mega farms now that are traveling through communities. I don't think too many of them actually come through Clintonville because you're not in a location where, they're usually empty when they come through here, they're not loaded. But a lot of those manure wagons that they're hauling around now are like 144,000 pounds. So they could be doing a lot of damage to your local streets. And I think in those cases, a permit would be very beneficial. The county highway commissioner told me that the intent here is for 2015 to be an education year. They're going to be looking for law enforcement to probably stop these heavy loads that are coming through without permits, give them warnings, make them aware of the new requirements, and get, you know, get everybody acclimated through the year 2015. And I think enforcement will be stepped up on these weight limits going from that point forward. But the county's recommending, and based on everything that Toby and I've heard on this, we're recommending that you adopt option F, which basically means you don't have to do anything except issue these free permits when they come forward and ask for them from the local authorities.
Any discussion or motion? A question?
I have a question. What will this impact? The road construction that's going to be coming through Clintonville in the next couple of years with the, is it one?
Yeah. They would have to follow the designated detour routes and...
Will this make it more difficult for them to travel?
And what I would say is if there is anything on those detour routes of concern because of the weights, then I would think through the police department and public works that they may have some alternate routes. They might want a certain kind of carrier to follow if that's the case. But normally, the detour routes are intended to handle the heavy traffic as much as the main, you know, the main route. And I know there's some improvements being proposed on the local streets because of that, adding stop signs and certain things in certain locations.
You're welcome. Phil?
I'd like to move the council accept option F from Wisconsin Act 377, which increases the weight limit.
Second? Motion by Raff, second by Preset, to accept option F on the Wisconsin Act 377. Any discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanback?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Preset?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowes?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Motion carrying, all voting aye. And Shane hasn't made it. I'm sorry, we need to... That, I think. And not having anyone here from... Okay. Do you want to use a mic, maybe?
Oh, we discussed it in finance.
We did not take any action on it. Maybe Chuck can explain it better from the PFC meeting last night.
The bids were opened by committee last night and they were higher than the approved amount for the truck that was based on the grant. And the direction that I understood that the committee had given based on the minutes that were submitted to the office was that the fire department was supposed to go back to the low bidder and see if they could negotiate the price on the truck and get it in line with what the approved grant amount and expenditure limit is for the project. That has not taken place yet. During today's finance committee meeting, the chief asked if the committee would approve the truck at the maximum price so he could move forward with it on a more timely basis. And that motion did not pass the finance committee earlier this evening. So the direction he was given was to negotiate the price, bring back a solid price from the company. And it looks likely that you will have to have a special meeting of the council sometime, probably within the next week or two, to approve that purchase so that they can stay on timetable for getting the truck built and completed in order to receive the federal money that's associated with it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Let's move on to the Finance and Insurance Committee. Phil?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee has recommended that council payment of bills totaling $884,473.36.
Motion by Raff, second by Schley, to pay the bills in the amount of $884,473.36. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Raff?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanback?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Preset?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowes?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Motion carrying, all voting aye.
Your Honor, Finance Committee has recommended that council approval of garbage hauler's licenses is listed on page 36 of your packet. There's four names listed. First one, Advanced Disposal is contingent on receiving a payment.
Motion by Raff, second by Keister, to accept the low bid of advanced, I'm sorry, accept the bids of the four listed on page 32, which are Advanced Disposal, Station Sanitation and Recycling, Hardest Fox Valley Disposal, LLC, and Waste Management Wisconsin. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Wilson?
Yes.
Deanback?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Preset?
Yes.
2014-16, which is the park and rec fee charges for the coming year. I so move.
I'll second. Motion by Rath, second by Dunleavy, to accept the recreation fee charges scheduled as presented for 2014 through 16. Correct? Mary Beth?
Hi. Before this action was taken to raise the fees, I had input from a number of constituents and some people outside of the city, I mean, outside of my district. They didn't know that we were already charging this food pantry $30 a month for their, quote, "facility" in the basement of the rec center, the old armory. There was a problem with it, they, we were only heating it five hours a day, these people are very cold, and it was suggested to me that, in fact, a number of us talked about just contributing the money. Now I hear that the park and rec committee has decided to raise the rent of the food pantry $20, and it just seems to me that trying to balance our budget on the backs of the food pantry, we need to be helping these people, those of us that are in churches that are contributing food. This is $220 a year, which means virtually nothing to the cost of the armory. As you know, the heating is the problem, it's $11,000 a year to heat it. So we're trying to raise money by raising money at the tenants. The other tenant is the Historical Society, and I think they, I'm not sure, their raise was maybe $5 or something, was it the same? Anyway, but I'm more concerned with, since they have more money than the food pantry, I'm very concerned and would strongly object. I know that the ministers in town are trying to get together, they're working on trying to find another place that would be more hospitable for the food pantry. What I understand, the discussion was that, well, if they moved, they would have to pay $250, so why don't we try to, you know, compromise with them and get some of the money so that, because if they have to move, they're now they're going to pay it. I just don't buy that. I think this is a very poor public relations move for the council and for the committee and also for the community. We need to support this group, not to penalize them. So that particular point, I would like us to take those individually then, rather than a blanket vote.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I guess I'm going to address this a little bit. I sit on the park and rec, and as far as, everything has went up. Every single thing that we offer the community has went up. Anything for the kids, anything as far as that goes. Okay, and what I'm saying is, I do not believe that upping this, what did we, $20? I don't believe that's going to make a great difference, a great deal of difference. And we're really cutting them a deal. It is not a city thing. The food pantry is not ran by the city. We offer them a place to be, and to me, $50 a month, I think, is very cheap. We had even talked about even going higher, and then we settled at 50, because, as I said, it is, it's a place for them to have, the food pantry, but also, it's, I just think it's fair that the price is upped a bit. That's just my personal opinion. Like I said, every single thing has went up, and I believe that should go up too. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mary Beth?
Add one thing. I think at the committee meeting, Ms. Dunleavy had said she was going to research how other committees are handling it. I did start researching. In Cecil, they have a free place contributed by a church. We do have a line on a possible church that might provide a place for this, but I think for us to say that we're going to charge them more when the heat is poor, there's no handicap access, it's not ideal. And I think we kind of scared them when we talked about that they might have to move, and they've been reassured they don't have to. But I just think that for $220 a year, I think we can find revenue elsewhere and not from the food pantry. These are, they're feeding something like 400, 500 people a month and 125 families or something. And if you know the people that work down there, they're very devoted, they're down there working, not when they're open, but they're sorting clothes and sorting foods, they're in there, and it's very cold, because you can't heat that building up in five hours. And that's the only heat we're putting on. So as I said, and I'm surprised that food pantry people are not here tonight.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Would you please read it for me?
Motion by Rath, second by Dunleavy, to approve Resolution 2014-16, Park and Recreation 2015 fee charges scheduled.
Roll call, please. Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
No.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
No.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
No.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
All voting aye.
Item B, Your Honor, the Finance Committee has recommended to council approval of the park and rec fund, 2014 park and rec fund carryover, which amounts to approximately $7,000, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Rath, second by Dunleavy, to approve the carryover funds, approximately $7,000. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye. Next item?
Item F, Your Honor, 2015 HSA funding, and I would like to request that Chuck enlighten the council.
Under your current health insurance plan for your employees, there's an HSA requirement associated with that, and currently, the city funds 100% of that, $3,000 every year for each employee. Normally, in January, that money is sent to the employees, so they have it available to pay their medical bills throughout the course of the year. We're investigating, and in all likelihood, we'll be looking at switching to a different insurance plan beginning April 1st, that will be lower in cost for the city, and it will not involve an HSA, it'll have a straight deductible program associated with it. And so, rather than distribute the $3,000 in January to all the employees, we're recommending that only a quarter of that payment be made, $750, to each employee under the plan, for them to cover their bills. And if any employees incur expenses above that in the first quarter of the year, they'll be able to bring their bills directly into the clerk's office, and the city will cover them, because we're still under that HSA, but will cover them on an individual basis, thereby saving the city the money of all those employees that don't have those expenses, so you won't, you know, you won't be sending that $3,000 out to everybody. If for some reason, we don't make the health insurance switch, and I can't see right now what that would be, but if you don't make the health insurance switch, the balance of the $3,000 can be sent out, you know, in April to the employees. But this will save the city money, overall, the switch in insurance will save the city money on monthly premiums, it'll save the employee money on monthly premiums, and you will not have to have this HSA associated with it. Peggy, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you. It was the recommendation, recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve the January payment of $750, and any additional expenses incurred by employees to be paid by the city, and I so move.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rath, second by Schley, to approve the $750 of the HSA funding to the employees in January. Would you read the rest of that, please?
And if the bills exceed that amount, they will submit documentation to the clerk commissioner for payment into the HSA.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Lois?
Is that not to exceed the $3,000 then?
Roll call, please. Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye.
Item G, Your Honor, in your packet, starting on page 41, you should have Identity Theft Prevention Program review, as a recommendation of the Finance Committee that this program be approved. I so move.
Motion by Rath, second by Schley, to approve the Identity Theft Prevention Program for the City of Clintonville. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye. Okay, Safety and Ordinance. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. All we have here is the Regulation of Dogs and Cats, Licensing of Dogs and Cats, Impounding. I'm not going to read through it all. It will then go to resolution, I believe, once this gets passed, for how much the cost, is that not how we're working, at how much the cost will be for a dog slash cat when they're picked up, or when they're found in a new adopted home? And I so move.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dunleavy, second by Schley, to approve Ordinance 1098, the impounding and disposition of dogs and cats. Any discussion? Mary Beth?
Those that don't have it before him, there's a $25 charge, or else, either or, the cost of spay or neuter, which is a very reasonable charge.
Captain?
I'm just, have Chief Martin involved with these?
Yes, yes. Yeah, he's fully aware, and so is Liz. And what it basically is going to be, it's going to be the cost incurred, say, if there's a cat or dog that comes in and they need medical attention, and they will be charged also that, from what I'm guessing, so whatever, if they need, they got a broke leg, and they get the leg fixed.
Just wanted to make sure he was on board.
He's on board.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Dunleavy?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye. We'll move on to the Street Committee.
Item A, Your Honor, the Street Committee has recommended to council accepting the property which appears on page 47 of your packet, the site to dump excess snow, with the provision that Public Works Director be advised that there's a concern about drainage, and the site is to be used only in emergency. And we will be looking for two additional sites in the downtown area, and I so move.
I'll second. Motion by Rath, second by Deanbach, to accept the proposed site for snow hauling site. Any discussion? I'm sorry. Please.
The reason this was brought forward to the committees and the council is that this property is owned by the Public Works Manager, and he's offering it, you know, for, he has a potential site for snow storage. Because of his, you know, position with the city, I want to make sure this was all above board, everybody was aware of it. And in case you get any questions, you understand why his property is involved. There's no rental charge or anything. The two issues that Toby asked to be included in this is that Public Works would keep the grass cut on it in the summer, and they pick up the garbage once the snow melts. And that's the typical requirements that they have of any site where they dump snow on private property. So that's really the reason it's before you, is because it's under his ownership.
Any discussion? Gloria?
I just got one question, and I guess maybe I read it wrong. It's going to be this, we're cutting the lawn forever? I mean, for the year, or is it a one-time thing, or is...
When it needs it, basically.
Okay, okay, just clarifying, because I...
You know, stay within ordinances and...
Okay, and that'd be through the mowing?
Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
This is backed by the co-op, right?
Yes.
It's right next to it.
I'm sorry, John.
Who's going to haul the snow there, actually? The Street Committee?
The city.
The city.
Well, the city, well...
The city. They lost the access to the Seagrave site that they used, where they used to haul the snow from downtown. So he's looking for alternate sites to take it on. They can haul it to the airport, but that's a long haul, it's going to be costly in terms of man time and also fuel. So he's looking for alternative sites that are closer to the downtown, and this is one, but it's not going to be large enough to handle all the snow, because it's a relatively small site.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, would you repeat the motion, please?
Peggy, by Rath, second by Deanbach, to approve the proposed site if needed, and pursue other site options.
Roll call, please. Rath?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Deanbach?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Resett?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye. Okay, Utility Board.
The discussion on possible action on municipal code amendments. We are forwarding it to Safety and Ordinance for their final approval, we are good with them. Ordinance 1099, ordinance 1100, and ordinance 1101. We're just making a few changes on the responsibilities for the wastewater utility and for the Street Committee to the Utility Board. We're taking the wastewater and putting it onto the Utility Board. It used to be that way years ago, and it changed somewhere along the lines. And then we are also amending the membership representation on the Utility Board, and it would be a finance person, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, the Chairman of the Street Committee, and the Utility Board, and then two other people, but that will go to Safety and Ordinance for final approval, and then it will be coming back to council. Okay, thank you.
You do not need any actions tonight. Thank you for sharing.
And the discussion on possible action regarding on-call pay for utility and public work employees. We discussed it at our joint meeting last night for utility and street, and we are going to refer this to a subcommittee. Bill suggested that, and we all thought it was a good idea. The Chair from the Street Committee, the Chair from the utility, and then one other person from the street, and one other person from the utility committee, plus the city administrator will review, because Chuck phoned us a bunch of information on on-call pay from all of the ones. Okay, kind of go over it and do some tweaking and come back with it. and come back with it. And we will be doing that soon, I would hope. We'll have to get together to take care of that and get that underway. So there'll be no action on that this evening either.
Okay.
And the action on the job description for the wastewater manager position, that's on page 59 through 62. We accepted the description last night at the meetings. And I would so move with the council to adopt it as well.
Second? By Schley, second by Keister, to approve the...
Well, there was only one change on it. On the page 62, instead of moderate weight, it would weigh, it would say 50 pounds halfway down the page where it says, "will occasionally lift and/or remove objects of 50-pound weight." Instead of moderate weight?
50.
Yeah. That would be the only change in that job description. Otherwise, that could be adopted.
Okay, any discussion? See, did we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, Mary Beth, you did, okay. Would you please read the motion?
Motion by Schley, second by Keister, to approve the job description for the water wastewater manager with one change being from moderate weight is being changed to 50-pound weight.
Thank you. Rule call. Wilson?
Yes.
Steenbach?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Brissette?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunn Levy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye.
We interviewed four individuals for that position and it was unanimous selection of everyone on the committee to offer the position to Stacy Zacco. Did I get it right, Zacco? He can't get it right. She's a resident of Clintonville and has a bachelor's degree from UW Oshkosh in Accounting and Finance. She's currently a tax accountant at US Venture in Fox Valley. And she'll be starting in the position on December 22nd.
Boss? Okay, did everyone hear that?
No.
Okay.
It's not a managerial position. Non-managerial positions are not council hires. They're usually not even... It's usually the department heads and the city administrator that does that hiring.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Stacy, then we'll start December 22nd, you said?
Good.
Thank you. Okay, Chuck, would you bring us up to speed on the Tourism, Marketing, and Advertising Council? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Jeannie, go right ahead then.
It doesn't make a difference to me. The approval of the funding request for 2015 Clintonville Visitor's Guide, submitted by Jeff Huffman, Multimedia Channels. We approved... He was requesting $600 for the back-page ad and we approved $350 for a smaller ad because the committee felt that the expenditure doesn't meet the definition of putting heads in beds in the hotels. And it was unanimous from all of the... Oh, no, it wasn't unanimous. It was voted three to one to do the $350. And that would be coming out of the Tourism Fund. And I would make that motion.
I'll second. Motion by Schley, second by Dunn Levy, to expend the $350 out of the Tourism Fund for the visitor guide request.
I just remembered that we didn't take a smaller ad. We just took a full-page ad on the inside.
Oh, I see.
But it's that much cheaper. And the reason was that, in the past, the representative on the committee that is a hotel person, the money for the Tourism Fund comes from the hotel tax, the room tax. And they said they've had an ad in this publication for as long as they've had it saying 10% off if you show us this ad. And they haven't ever gotten anyone. So we went for it one more time. We're going to look at it one more time. So that's why it is a full-page ad, but it's less, but it is on the inside cover.
Okay. Lois, did you have a... No? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a...
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Peggy, would you please read the...
Motion by Schley, second by Dunn Levy, to approve $350 for advertising in the 2015 Clintonville Visitor's Guide with the funds to come from the Tourism Fund.
Rule call, please. Steenbach?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Brissette?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunn Levy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye. And then the next item, Jeannie?
Approve funding request for the 73rd Annual Wisconsin Valley Bowling Tournament, submitted by Steve Hanson. And maybe Chuck can handle this one better than I can because you've been dealing with him on it.
Their original request was for $1,500 of tourism money. This tournament's held in February of 2015. And obviously, their goal is to hopefully have people come to this tournament and stay in town overnight in the hotels. It runs, it's on, I think, four different weekends throughout the month of February. It was a new request. Well, actually, the applicant wanted to use the funds for the raised money for the bowling tournament. And the committee felt that that was not in keeping with really what the goals of the program were. So there was a motion to approve $500 of funding to support 10 winners at $50 each of bowlers that would come and register and stay overnight in the Clintonville Hotels. So it'll be up to the hotel owners to coordinate this. They'll check, when people are checking in, they'll ask them if they're involved in the bowling tournament. If they are, their names will go into a drawing. And so everybody that stays in the hotels over the course of that month will be involved in a drawing at the end of the month. There'll be 10 winners of $50 each. They will get some of their money back for actually staying in the hotels in the community. And I think this was kind of looked at as, well, if it works well, perhaps the tournament's held here again, maybe there'll be an increase in funding the next time around. But the committee felt, for the first time, they just want to allocate $500 towards it. And I've talked to Mr. Hanson about this and he's appreciative of the approval that was made. And he's on board with how it's going to be handled and worked through with the hotel owners.
Just want to thank Chuck for the suggestion. It was his idea that we could have this drawing and it was a good idea to link it to the housing. So we appreciate that, that suggestion. I think it fits the need, it fits the criteria for what we fund.
Okay. I'd make the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Schley, second by Dunn Levy, to spend $500 out of the Tourism Account for the 73rd Annual Wisconsin Valley Tournament, Bowling Tournament. And any further discussion? Rule call, please. Keister?
Yes.
Brissette?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunn Levy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Steenbach?
Yes.
Motion carried, all voting aye. We will now move on to the appointments for the committees that Greg Rose served on. And I am going to appoint Lois Brissette to the Airport Commission, Street Committee, Board of Zoning and Housing Appeals, Personnel Committee, Board of Review, Facilities Committee. The Library Board I have open right now. I've got calls out for people and I'll make that decision as soon as I get response from them.
I spoke with Phil. He's willing to leave Library Board so that I can place them. So if that is possible, I will resume the next week.
Okay, Phil, you did okay that? Okay, then I will add Lois to the Library Board. And then we have one citizen position open. And I got a call out to an individual that will let me know tomorrow if he will accept the nomination or the place on the Library Board. Okay, so we have, we'll go to, once again, Brissette for Airport, Street, Board of Zoning and Housing Appeals, Library Board, Personnel, Board of Review, and Facilities Committee. And then the Clause Board, just...
Wasn't the Board of Review, weren't you on that as a citizen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry about that. I'll have to double-check that one then. Okay, and then the Clause Board, I'm appointing Jeannie Schley. Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the appointments. Yes, he was the Chair of one of...
Airport.
Airport.
I will serve on Airport. And Clause. And Clause.
Two people on Clause. Yep, Mark Dorning is... Be back up if the Chair can't be there.
So will Mark be the Chair then? Now?
Yes.
That's my question.
I'm sorry.
And the Board of Chair will be?
Lois, because she has served on that committee before. Okay, any other discussion? Now?
I just want to make one more clarification so you won't be appointing anyone to the Board of Review at this time.
At this time. I will have to get some recommendations for citizens. Okay.
And the Airport is going to be missing a citizen?
The Airport... A citizen at large. Will be missing it this time. Okay, now may I have a... Rule call? I have a motion. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the appointments.
I'm sorry. Motion by Schley, second by Raff, to accept the appointments as presented. Rule call, please. Brissette? Schley?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunn Levy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Steenbach?
Yes.
Keister?
No.
Motion carried, passed, seven ayes and one nay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion about me. Mary Beth, you requested the first two items, so...
I just want to make it clear that I did not request the items. Three council members requested a special meeting last week and we were unable to have a quorum. So the item was put on this, on the agenda. Mr. Crowe, Mr. Wilson, and I requested the special meeting. And we preferred to have it timely. When we did get the news release that the mayor was coming back, we realized we don't have any kind of a leave policy for elected officials. So it occurred to us that any one of us council members could tonight say, you know, I'm going to have a family leave or I'm going to have an illness leave or something. And then we would be leaving with pay and for an indefinite time. So we think that there needs to be, even though we are elected officials, this has never come up before, I guess. So that was our reason for calling it your attention, that we did get the notification from the mayor and we're not, have no intent of discussing her health. But she did, in her notice of leave, mention it was because of mental health. So that's the only reason. It's never been mentioned by us. However, we don't have any leave policy so that an other person could say, "Well, I have an illness and I'm going to take a leave." Would we fill that vacancy? In the case of the mayor, we do have the ordinance that says in the absence of the mayor, the president of the council steps up. We have nothing, we have nothing that would take care of the case if it would happen with an other person. So we would think that perhaps Personnel would consider that even though we're elected, there needs to be representation for each district. And so that is, that's a gap. The second thing is, as far as the readiness to resume duties, our constituents have asked us, and the question has been raised, we did get the notice from the mayor that she would be back on or before November 26th. And I have a list of people who said, "How would you know that you're going to be mentally ready, your mental health is going to be back to normal on or before November 26th?" So that was the only reference to that. So that was a question that was asked. So I would say, given, that was a goal that I set to... Or just, did I just finish? Yes. So consequently, when we got the announcement that she was coming back, there was no reference to health.[1643.14] to health. So we were just wondering, was that left out intentionally or, you know, I would have thought, we would have thought there would have been a mention, I am now, you know, ready to resume my duties mentally. So those, that was the question for bringing it up. If we should have a leave policy, whether it would cover the, any elected official, the mayor in the future, should we in fact say if there's a medical leave, you know, we could say that, is there a medical leave? Did you see a doctor? Are you going to see a doctor for now? Or just take people's word for it? Just, for example, if, you know, somebody needed help with a family, wanted to take a trip of an extended trip, what would we do in filling the vacancy? I must remind you of the HIPAA laws, very strict. Gloria?
I believe there is something in place for council, council members. If you miss, we did this, I believe, with Mayor Beggs. We put one in for people that, if you missed more than, I believe it was two meetings a year, you were, would be probably replaced. Now, I don't know if that was resolution or, I don't, I don't know if it was a regular, you know, and you weren't here at the time. I think Jeanie and I were here. And we did that because we had frequent people that were not showing up for meetings, so we had to have it where, okay, you get two meetings a year that you can miss and that's it, then you would be replaced. And it was kind of that. And I guess when you were mentioning HIPAA, I know HIPAA, but kind of, and I hate to say this, Judy, but you kind of left the door open with your letter when you initially left. You left that door kind of wide open because you did say that there were six people that were causing you issues and when your mental health was better, you would be returning. And that was quoted, still on the internet, you can go and look it up. So HIPAA or not, you opened the door on that one and you did state it. So there you go. Thank you. Mary Beth?
And I think, you know, absences, I'm not, I'm really not talking about absence. In this case, it wasn't that she's going to be absent because then, or we were going to be absent because, you know, we have excused meetings and so forth. But I'm talking about saying that someone would request a leave and I can, I guess I can see that it would happen. You know, if someone has all of a sudden a family member that they have to care for in another part of the state, you know, what if I, what if I said, I want to take a leave, I want to go? And I, I wouldn't have to say what, I mean, you know, what we're saying, she happened to say, mental health, but we, we have to say what we were taking a leave for and in the future, do we want this to happen again? Or do we want to have a little more verification? And again, this, this unknown, the other concern was that there was no communication, you know, Acting Mayor Schley was trying to contact the mayor, there was no contact with her during this entire period, no phone calls returned. So it was, it was a little disconcerting for her to be Acting Mayor and not get any phone calls returned. So that was, that was kind of puzzling too, because she did continue her other, her other duties at the school board. So I just think, I bring it up, should we have a policy? What if it comes up again? What if it comes up with one of us that we want to take a leave? Would we allow it? Why wouldn't it be the same as for the mayor is what I'm saying. Any other discussion? Lois?
I think the concern with the two meetings that you were talking about, I think that if it's not related to medical, then I think that it's appropriate that you ask somebody to resign from the council. But I think when you have a medical issue, I think we're talking about something different than that. Because somebody, you know, can just decide that they're not going to be able to fulfill their duties anymore because of a medical issue or because of something that is out of town, a family medical leave kind of thing. But, you know, I, I guess I have a lot of concern about the council kind of, you know, looking and criticizing or even, you know, being really concerned about somebody's responsibility to their own constituents. So I think we should refer this to Personnel and maybe even look at some kind of a policy. But I think when we're talking about somebody's medical, I think we have to be real careful about whether or not and how we judge somebody for taking any kind of a medical leave. Now, if they want to spend two months in Florida because that's what their plans were, then I think maybe they need to decide whether or not they're going to fulfill their duties to their constituents. But I think when it's a medical situation, I think sometimes that's beyond somebody's control. So I think that we need to be real careful in how we're discussing somebody's medical and whether it's the mayor or any of us, I think we need to be very careful about how we make our discussions. And I think that this should have really been discussed possibly in Personnel first or, you know, somewhere other than in the private or in the public forum that it's in right now, so.
Just a second. Lois, I have made the statement in the past that any discussion about the mayor position is an open session. Because I want this community to know what's going on.
I understand, but I also think that if we're going to be looking at a policy, I think when we look at a medical issue, I think we need to be very careful about that. Like I said, if somebody wants, somebody's elected and they decided that they wanted to spend a couple of months in Florida, you know, then I think they need to reevaluate whether or not they're committed to their constituents. But a medical situation, I think, is different where you don't really have any control over, you know, some kind of a medical issue that you might have to deal with. So I think we should be a little bit more respectful to somebody that has to make a decision in regard to their health.
Gloria?
Okay, I guess all I've got to say on that is, that could be, and I'm going to use myself as an example, I could go home tonight and decide, I'm taking a medical and I'll come back the end of March. But I don't have, I don't have anything as far as saying a doctor hasn't given me anything or there's no real diagnosis, but it's just like, yep, it's getting a little hot for me, so I'm going to step down for a while and I'm just going to do it that way. I realize there has to be something in place because this could end up just being, it could snowball and go from, okay, now I'm going to take one, you're going to take one, you're going to take one, we're all just going to be, but we cannot be replaced because we're doing a medical that we have decided is a medical.
Remember, we are elected officials and we answer to the people that elected us. Jim, you were next.
Okay, I guess I'm concerned about the fact that if this policy exists now concerning the two meetings, well, since I've been on the council, I know of a couple of councilmen here who have missed more than that already. And I've only been on since April. Now, I don't know, why isn't that being enforced? It should have been. And I agree that if it's a legitimate medical reason, a person who wants to take a medical leave for, in a extended period of time, I think they ought to go to a doctor, get, present some kind of a documentation from a doctor, psychiatrist, or whatever, and before they can return to work, they present a clear bill of health from a doctor, psychiatrist, I don't care, dentist for all I care, as long as that person's condition is treated, treated properly and we know that they're capable of coming back to work. I have two, two things I threw out there. One of them being the fact that we have members who just don't show up.
I'm assuming you're referring to these two?
I'm not referring to anyone directly. Just look at the records and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Well, they did call and ask permission to be excused because their jobs have them in other states right now.
Well, that's, you're referring to these two?
Yes.
Okay. What I'm saying, I didn't necessarily name names here, but I would hold that. So in other words, that rule or that's out there doesn't count if you're working out of town?
Well, I have to go and reread that.
Yeah, well, I would think we, that should have been known because if I wanted to work every night out of town, I'd, I'd have a good reason not to go to a council meeting.
Phil?
I guess one of the things that troubles me is you have, in some cases, maybe 5% or congressmen will show up for 5% of the meetings are supposed to be attended and they seem to get reelected. Council is comprised of business people, professional people, people like me who work for a living, but I really believe it's up to the electorate to decide if those people are fit to, and it has nothing to do with how many meetings they make. It's their voter, the people that voted them should have the ultimate say if they're fit to serve office or not because you could lose some very good representation by trying to pick a hole in one of his three meetings, he can't be a councilman.
John and then Lois.
Well, you know, this city here, there's things in place, there's rules and regulations, I don't know about this one, but if this one is in place, why don't we start enforcing these rules we got? Why not, we're just making them up as we go all the time. That isn't right, I don't think. Why even have them? They'll make no difference. Thank you.
Lois?
I would just like to ask April what your recommendation is to the council in regard to how we proceed with this, because it seems like there needs to be some kind of a policy. Is there going to be, would there be one for, like, we already have one in place that has the two meetings, but would there need to be one separate for medical?
I'm not aware of this two-meeting rule.
I, I didn't know, I wasn't aware of it either.
It's in there. It's in there somewhere. It's in there somewhere, way back when.
I was just looking through, you know, the chapter one and chapter two, which relate to the council, but I didn't see anything in there, but that's just the cursory reading right now. One thing, you are elected officials, you are not employees, so your rules are different about regulation of what, you know, you can ask and demand of other people because you're elected officials, you're not an employee to say, we need you to bring in a note from your doctor if you're taking medical leave. However, there are state statutes that control removal from office if you don't attend meetings. You may compel another council member's attendance at meetings. If they don't regularly attend, then you can remove them from office, that would be cause to remove from office. I don't see that you really have that problem here though with council members not attending. But you may want to refer this to Personnel Committee to discuss a potential leave policy for elected officials. So if this instance should arise again, that there are, there's a policy in place to handle the who's, why's, and what's, because that was not addressed this time and it was, it was not handled well, so I think it can be handled better the next go around, if that were to occur.
Any other discussion? Okay. Would it be in order to move that we refer this to the Personnel Committee for consideration? That's entirely up to the council. I, I would do that then, because that's, that's, I just, I wanted to bring the issue up, you know, because as, as we don't, you know, we don't want it to happen again without things that lose it, so I moved that the issue up, leave for elected officials, we refer to the Personnel Committee and they get reported back to the council. Motion by Keister, seconded by Dunn Levy, to have discussion of leave policy for elected officials go to the Personnel Committee. Any other discussion? Lois?
I just would like to know if there's other policies in place that cities have in regard to a leave policy on their elected officials? And Chuck, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but have you ever come across where there's been policy in regard to elected officials?
They're not real common, but I have seen communities that do have policies. I'm aware of one that has a policy that if you miss three months of service, that you're removed, you know, there's a process for removing. Very often, though, those policies include medical exemptions, so they're for other reasons. And this, this kind of issue has occurred in the past for elected city clerks. I take it, you know, I'm aware of a couple of situations where someone took off for six or eight months and just didn't show up for their job and council had to do something about it, it was a late, in case of elected clerk. But they're not real common, it's kind of unusual.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please. Schley?
Yes.
Krauth?
Yes.
Don Lovey?
Yes.
Raff?
Wilson?
Yes.
Dean Bach?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Brissette?
No.
Motion passes six to two. Thank you. We'll move on to the TIFs. Jeanie?
The TIFs three expenditures.
Can you hear her?
The TIFs three expenditures, we approved, the council approved, doing the new road and doing sewer and water, that's what we approved. And then this bill comes across dated 8/15 for $203,000. Council did not approve. You approved it, Judy?
Yes, I did. No one had thought, when they were building the road, that there should be streetlights there. That came up as a very last thought and I can't remember, Brian, if you had mentioned the streetlights in our discussions, but I then called Todd Paves, who is, oversees all of our TIF districts, and asked him how, if we could get this done, because I was made aware of this on August 16th and all spending needed to be done by August 18th. Todd did give me, told me that what we needed to do was get at least two bids to do it and then the construction could take place up through March of 2015. I did have the check cut and then Mandy and I discussed that and I asked her to have that check voided because we do, did have the two bids and nothing has taken place and I understand that while I was gone, Mandy brought the check back saying that, what do I do with it? I had talked to her in August that that check needed to go back and go back into the TIF district as long as Todd said that we could do this prior or later and we had until August 15th. Now, where nothing has been decided who was going to do what, you still have time to do that. Now, you tell me what business would come into town and decide that they would like one of those new areas that we just purchased without lights there? Do you think they would be happy if we told them they had paid to have the lights put out there? I don't think so.
I'm not done, Jim.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, this is dated 8/15, you dated it, you quoted it to do this, the check was cut. We voided the check.
Well, I had asked, but I'm not, come to me.
This is dated 8/6. This is dated August 6th. This is dated August 15th, the $203,000.
What's dated August 6th, please?
Some of the bids is dated August 6th. We had a council meeting August 13th where we seen that movie, what we can and can't do as public officials. This is something we cannot do on our own. $203,000, we cannot do on our own. Some of this was done, on this side of 156 was done. We didn't approve it. We didn't approve that stuff. It was done. And I just don't know, there was, what was done on? The stop signs and stuff that are out behind paper converting, that's in this TIF bill. You had it put into the TIF, it's your signature, that's inaccessible, almost $10,000 with those flashy lights and the top, the, we didn't spend that. We didn't, and all of us were flabbergasted by it.
So be it. Creative converting, had asked about crosswalks and some signals. We have given them in the past TIF money.
But it came to council.
And we have built a parking lot for them across the road.
That came to council?
Yes.
Uh huh.
So nothing has taken place other than those stop signs and that is going to be the detour route.
And that could have came out of that other money, not out of a TIF. That could have came out of the, I've been in those meetings when you were on leave. I've asked those people at the DOT, some of that stuff would have been incorporated into that and the DOT would have paid it. It wouldn't have been into a TIF.
Okay, let me talk to Roxanne from the DOT.
Okay. Because I talked to her twice now on it.
Okay. Mary Beth? There was, there was another issue that Terry's not here tonight, but signs were authorized saying that, that they, that the, I don't know if it was converting or whoever it was, that they could operate their little front-end loaders, it said, watch out for fronters, front-end loaders or whatever. And Terry said, oh my goodness, we can't, we can't do that because then we'd be liable for it. It's against the law for these little, I'm going to call it front-end loaders, to go on the highway. It's good to, so if we would put up a sign that said, watch out for them, then we, the city, would be saying, we're endorsing this. So he said, the only people that can put up, that in order to authorize any kind of traffic signs would be Chief Lorge and Toby, and yet you did authorize these signs and so now they're sitting, I can't remember how much that cost was.
For a lot.
But that isn't something we can't do, that would, it would make the city liable for any accident with these little toll-free things. So what Jeanie is saying, these things need to, needed to come to the council and a 200, how much was the big check? 200, 203? We did have a council meeting, which we could have approved it, so that is, you're not authorized to make those kind of expenditures. Okay, let's move on. I'm sorry, Jim.
Well, I guess what the shocks mean is that we built this road and we went out and got streetlights and signs and bought all that kind of stuff and there is no electricity out there. Why, why would anybody buy a streetlight or a sign and you can't even plug it in?
We did not buy streetlights. That was what part of that check was for. And the, and the stop or the flashing signs are solar, the pedestrian crossings.
But they're still hooked up to electricity? But they're still hooked up to electricity?
Out there by the paper converting, they're electrical.
Brian, would you care to address that?
There's electricity.
But, well, the streetlights they put up aren't, because there's streetlights up there too, that got put up without, I don't know, I just don't understand how two days prior to you signing this, we all had to sit and watch this movie. You watched the movie. What we can and can't do as ourselves, we cannot do anything as ourselves. As a group, we can. The majority rules.
Then let's move back. Mary Beth has been calling lots of people on behalf of the Council, asking for a...
That's what I'm...
Oh, I'm saying it now.
What?
Let's move on.
No, I... Your point? I just got to say one thing, Judy. I guess I'm so curious as to how you thought that you personally, alone, with none of us involved, can write out a check for $203,000 and expect it to go through, and then you are making up dates, which all is documented, there was a meeting two days before. You would have brought that to Council, it would have passed, there wouldn't have been any issues. But you brought it on yourself to just, "I'm going to do this." You're not, you're not the CEO, you're not the CEO of Clintonville and can do everything just on your own. It still is, all of us together is one really good team. But when you go off on your own and decide you're doing it, don't you think it makes it difficult for us? We're taking a beating out here on everything, and out in the community.
You don't think I'm not taking a beating?
And I'm just, all I'm saying, Judy, is you did wrong, and you go, "Let's move on." No, sometimes you have to own up to your mistakes.
I apologize.
No, because you always go, "I made a mistake, and I apologize, I'm only human." This has been round and round for the last year, and it's sad. Judy, I've known you how many years, and it's really, really sad that it's come to this. I think I've known you almost my whole life. Let's say good gravy. Don?
There was another set of regulations, we're not going by them again. There's another example right there.
Okay. Mary Beth?
I just like to ask you, you said that I've been making calls on behalf of the Council? You've been making calls and coming back to the Council, that you took it upon yourself to call, well, let's use Walker Forge as one, the past month you had called...
Walker Forge?
I have to, I have to get my notes, and I'll get it back to you on that. Please do, because I will. Called Walker Forge, I will. Lois?
Those signs that you're talking about, are they still packaged up?
Well, some of them can't even be used.
I'm sorry.
The ones that were ordered for shut, yeah, they can't get sent back because...
Oh, they can't?
No, because they're made a certain...
Oh, okay. Because I was thinking if we could return them, we're not going to use...
They try.
Can we sell them to another city? I mean, is there something that we can try and recoup money from? I mean, there might be a city out there that's interested in signs. I mean, there's got to be a solution to this issue.
Well, I would like to know, and you're going to shoot me down anyhow, but Chuck owns property on both sides of Industrial Avenue. They use a tow motor to take equipment from one side to the other.
They can't.
They can't do it. But you, one of you had said that the Chief of Police could make that determination?
Well, he would have told you not to order them, but you didn't ask him.
Yeah, the Chief of Police said that, that only he and Toby orders, order any signs to do with traffic, they're the only ones. And he said, "We can't do it, because it's illegal to operate these tow motor things, whatever they are, on public highways." So what we've been kind of doing is looking the other way. Well, now they ask for signs that said, "Watch out for them," and which the Chief said, now you're saying, we're saying, you know, now we're really admitting that we know that they're there. And he said, you know, "Sometimes cities let people do it, but you kind of don't..." But putting the signs up would call attention to the fact, so we would be liable, that's what he said. Lois?
Well, I think that we should look for a company or some kind of organization, or a city that would be interested in buying those signs from us if we're not able to use them.
It's against state statutes to use them on a road, you can't.
But there might be somebody that could be willing to use them. I mean, we can at least look into trying to find somebody that would be interested in buying them, because it seems like there has to be some kind of a solution to the signs that are just sitting. Well, no, you said that, who was it, the block converting?
Those are up and not shut. Shut industry is the tow motor, or the tow motor. Nobody can operate a tow motor on highways, so they can't have signs to say, "Watch out for tow motors," because then you're saying you're...
Okay, so the sign says, "Watch out for a tow motor?" Okay.
Tow motor crossing or whatever.
Okay.
You can't have a tow motor crossing.
Well, I think a university might be willing to buy them, you know, college students are really interested in signs and all that kind of stuff. But Michigan Tech, they still signs, I mean...
They steal them because of...
I know, that's what I'm saying, maybe they'd be willing to buy them.
Captain?
May I make a suggestion to the Council? That you get a full legal opinion researched by you, April? Not just, and this is, please don't take this as an insult to my boss at all, but to the satisfaction of the Council, instead of taking one person's opinion, that you get a full legal opinion, or a legal interpretation, somewhere probably in Chapter 346 of Wisconsin statutes, as to how the proper and legal crossing of a highway, and that street is classified as a highway under definition, how it can be done, that the signs aren't legally authorizing traffic on, along, or traveling the traveled portion of the road. If they're directly crossing it, it may, the law may apply differently to it than if the tow motor is going along the roadway, on the paved portion of the road. And if so, if they find a legal way to cross that road, these signs could be legal by being advisory and not by regulatory. And I think that, April, I appreciate if you would look into that, and you could report back to the Council, that it's very possible that maybe with some adaptation, this could become legal, so that, advise that Chuck is not operating on the roadway, but crossing the roadway, he may be legal.
Yeah?
Just such as, like snowmobiles, can't be operated on a roadway, but they can legally cross a road. And such, things like that. That's why I'd like to have April bring a report back to you, so that you know exactly what kind of grounds you're standing on to make a good decision.
I can certainly do that. I can tell you that when it was discussed, a couple months ago, at the committee, whichever committee meeting it came before, Toby was here, and Chief Lorge was here to discuss it as well, that the issue was that they were going to be traveling along this side of the roadway. I can certainly write a legal opinion to provide to everyone, so that, you know, we have a full picture.
You're talking traveling on the roadway, along the roadway, I concur with Chief Lorge, that is not...
That's what it was, yeah.
But it was also stated they were just crossing, and that's why I wanted to have that clarified for you people.
I may have said that, but they...
They're not crossing, they're traveling with truffle?
Well, it says, "Watch out for them on the road." It says, "Watch out," they're operating on the road.
Jim?
Okay, I guess I've got to go back to the idea that there is no electricity out there. And, you know, I guess it goes along with the idea, here we are building a road, trying to attract, I mean, to make bigger lots, to attract bigger businesses, and who is going to put in the electricity? And if we wait, and if we shouldn't have waited, rather than buying the streetlights, we should have buried cable out there, so they could put any amount of electricity available at a substation. Now, that would be the common sense thing to do when you're talking construction. You don't go and buy a light bulb without having electrical wiring in your house to put it in. It, just, none of this made any sense when I heard it, and it doesn't make any sense now.
Lois?
You know, be that as it may, we still have to come up with some kind of a solution. So, rather than beating a dead horse over this, we just, we as a Council, I think we need to come up with some kind of a solution for this. So, why don't we go along in that discussion of where we're going to come up with a solution, rather than continuing to beat a dead horse, which is not making any, it just doesn't make any sense. We, you know, we, there was a problem that was presented, now we have to come up with a solution on how we're going to fix it, and it's up to us to do that. So I think that we should go on with that kind of a discussion, instead of just continuing to go back to something that there's nothing we can do about. So, I think if we can look at solutions, I think Captain Banks came up with a good solution, we can look at that, and if there's any other solutions on behalf for this, I think we should be looking at solutions more than creating more problems.
Well, you say, "There's nothing we can do about it."
I didn't say that.
You just got through telling me that...
You're continuing to go, you tapped the mayor. You know what, there's nothing you can, we can't go back to August, when this whole thing started.
Well, I'm not...
We need to start looking at solutions now.
Going to the future.
Right, so what is your solution to this? Please, come up with, somebody come up with something.
You're going to have to put electricity out there.
Well, then let's put electricity out there then, what?
Where are you going to get that kind of money? I'm talking major power.
Well, I thought somebody said there were solar lights out there.
No, those are the solar lights behind paper converting, that got put onto this TIF bill, which should not have been, without the Council's approval. None of this should have been done without the Council's approval, that's my problem.
Right, now, we've recognized the problem, so now I think, at some point, we need to come up with some kind of a solution. I don't know, I don't know, I...
Can we move on? Take it to one of your committees. I don't know what committee to even take it to, because this is, this is so wrong. It's so wrong. It's bordering on major illegal to do this.
It's not bordering, it is illegal.
It is illegal. It is illegal to do this. And the kicker is, two days prior to you dating this, we had the movie.
In our meeting.
At a full council meeting.
I thought the check was voided.
No, we avoided it.
Yeah, okay, so...
But I had asked that it be voided.
We don't know that.
You weren't provided that information at our last meeting?
I don't know.
So, so where the ramifications then? I guess I'm not following all of what you're doing. I thought that there was a check that was written, the check has been voided, so now what? What are the, what, you know, solutions, what are the ramifications? I'm not quite following where this discussion is going.
You tell me what the ramifications are.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
When somebody goes on their own, and authorizes spending $203,000, can you do that as a Council person?
I, probably not, but...
Probably not.
Well, definitely not.
All right, no then.
But, you know, for the sake of discussion here, what are the ramifications and what are the solutions? When are we going to move on from this?
Okay, can I answer that? What are, okay, I'm just, my main concern is, there's no ramifications to the mayor for doing that, and I'm sorry that it, what are we, I mean, what gave her the right to write the check?
I, you know, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, okay, so what are the ramifications?
If there's ramifications, then why are we continuing this discussion?
Because something should be done.
Well, you're not offering a solution then. What is it, you're saying something should be done, what is it?
I would like to ask Attorney, what are the legal ramifications for this?
Well, the money, the legal issue here, once the check was written, the money was spent. That's what happened. And by statute, the mayor has no authority to expend funds without prior Council approval. That's clear in Chapter 62, in Chapter 19, it's clear. So the minute that happened, that was illegal. Now, the $203,000, the $203,000, that check was voided by the Council, because the Council couldn't go back and make a void act. It couldn't go back and say, "This illegal expenditure of funds is not legal." Passed, and then it was too late, the TIF had closed, you know, a lot of wrong steps went to try and do something good for the community, but something better could have been done for the community. Some of that money was spent and items were purchased, well, that was illegal. And if anyone would challenge that action, well, the city would have an issue, because you, the mayor cannot spend money without prior Council approval. So when you speak of ramifications, you know, specifically, right now, probably none, if we move forward here, but if anyone were to challenge that particular act of expending funds, that was an illegal act, and that would be an issue.
And Tricia, wipe the smile off your face.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Wipe the smile off your face.
And what, what do you mean by that?
No, 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 yable yourself.
Mary Beth?
I'm just going to say that that's inappropriate comment from the Chair.
So be it. What they want is for me to resign. And I'm not going to, so you decide.
Good job.
Well, that, do we proceed with the ramifications, or?
I don't know. Lois?
So, well, so, who would go forward with this then? I mean, is a citizen?
No.
Mary Beth, the citizen, the city could be, the city could be subject to a... Yeah, okay, that's my question. They have, you know, there's a lot of restrictions on the TIF, we have to be very careful, you know, that we follow those rules too, so...
Can I ask Attorney Don Levy, I guess I have one question. If a citizen would bring suit, what could, what could happen? I mean, who's all held accountable for that? Is it the mayor, is it the mayor and the Council, is it, could it be, I mean, I'm just kind of knowing how far this could go, is it, does it end up being a lawsuit, or could it be a lawsuit?
Potentially, and the lawsuit would be, I mean, we're speaking potentials.
Okay.
Because I don't know the specific amount of what was actually spent and items purchased for, and that could be a potential claim, because that was an illegal act. It would be a lawsuit, citizen versus the city of Clintonville. It may name specific people in it, I don't know, I'm not drafting the lawsuit, so, I, and I, that would be, if that were to happen, and I dare say, I don't even want to say it, because it's, it's a large if. I mean, but that's any action that you do as a Council or as an elected official, that potential is there.
I just have one comment, and it's like, was that in the best interest of the city of Clintonville? Thank you.
Amy?
I have concern with this, because this was one of the first things brought up at one of my first meetings, and this was prior to my joining this Council, and if this is illegal, and stuff can happen, I want to know how it's going to affect me, because I was not involved with any of that. And I'm concerned with that. I mean, this was prior to my even being put on this Council.
Mary Beth?
I mean, you're fine, it's all proceeding when you were here, and you weren't here during...
And I would think would be the same for Lois.
Yeah, yeah.
If we were not aware of it, how could it affect us?
Well, your personal liability, as we saw in that video, would be limited because of your capacity as an elected official. So, you know, don't, don't go over the edge thinking you're personally liable for something here, and if, I mean, you know, you didn't know it was even happening until far after the... The liability probably wouldn't spread that far, but it would be the city ultimately who would be. So it's an action that would affect the city.
John?
Are we legally bound to do something about this as a Council? Is there anything in there that we, we should be doing that we're not? That we, when we took our oath, that we know something...
That we, when we don't hire old, that we know something illegally is going on, should we be held liable, actually?
You make a good point there, because you have a duty to the citizens who elected you to represent the city and uphold the laws, and make sure that all the laws are followed, and to act dutifully and faithfully in office and not conduct misconduct in office, um, and that might be what this is, and I'm, I'm not saying 100% that you should do something right now, I don't, I don't know what your, your duty should be, but you should certainly be held accountable for your activities in elected office.
What is, what is the attorney's... What is your recommendation for your council's power?
if this would be, if they consider it something that they want referred to the Personnel Committee who handles grievances, or if they want to pursue, um, an action actually involving the, the illegal expenditure of funds, that would be the council's discretion.
Mary Beth, and we had this, we had this discussion when we were dealing with the, um, the issues surrounding the, um, the position of the city administrator and activities, and we were reminded at that time that, you know, we, we would take it on that we have to uphold the law, so we, we have to act if we see something happening that's not legal, we have to, it's on that we have to act, you know, we have, so I think, you know, that's, we can't turn, we can't turn our back on something. I would say that, um, I don't know if the Personnel Committee is, um, the place, the place for this, um, I don't, I don't think so. I think, I think, you know, what you're, and I understand that you're both putting you on, you know, on the spot at this point, but if in fact, um, you know, if in fact a citizen comes forward and then the council has not taken any action, then we would have the responsibility, right? If we didn't do anything.
Uh, in, in what manner?
Well, say that a citizen came forward and said that there was a wrongdoing or mismanagement of funds or something, and that we knew about it, but we didn't do anything about it.
Yes, and that's handled by, by different rules within our state statutes.
Peggy, do we have a motion on any of this? Anything else from the council? I would entertain motions to go into closed session for our three items. I move that we adjourn into closed session, first one to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Friend 1, Friend C, conferring with legal counsel for governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved slash 10 North Main Street, Rose Publications may convene an open session for possible action, and who would you like in that meeting?
Attorney Dunleavy, Captain Vegas, Peggy Johnson, and Chuck Kel.
And then, do you want me to, I'll take the second.
Uh, so, Tricia asked to be part of this.
Is that understood she was asked to count?
Okay, then Tricia will be involved.
Okay, then the second, and then the second one, adjourn into closed session, and first one to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Friend 1, Friend C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, interim utility manager's salary may reconvene into open session for possible action, and who would you like to have in that, Mayor?
Attorney Dunleavy, Captain Vegas, Peggy Johnson, and Chuck Kel.
So move.
Oh, so you have one more?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
On the last meeting. Or do we have?
I think there's a...
Oh, I'm sure.
I think there's two, I think there's two, yeah, that's okay. So move.
Second?
Motion by Keister, second by Dunleavy to adjourn into closed session. Go call. Close?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Brand?
Wilson?
Yes.
Aimbach?
Yes.
Keister?
Yes.
Does that go?
Yes.
Motion carried. I would like to take a five-minute break, use the restroom, and start. Um, a settlement has been made with Rose Publications, and, um, we have promoted from within Bryan Elixon to the, the Electric Utility Manager, and his salary will be $79,999.80.
We keep it in the 20s, Vince.
Okay, and, uh, Chuck, you have a couple things to say yet?
Yeah, just, just two things. There's, uh, needs to be a special council meeting at the end of December, and we're targeting December 30th, uh, for that meeting, is everyone available?
At what time?
Whenever, be a very short agenda, there's no reason to wait late, but I guess I would say as early as people can get here, so, whatever that might be.
Nothing before 5:00?
Okay.
I'm kinda in that same boat. Sometimes I can, but...
5:30?
5:30, the perfect...
5:30, okay?
Yes.
Okay, 5:30 on the 30th, and that's to pay the year-end bills, and, um, I guess the other question is, do you wanna, this pound ordinance that's coming through the, do you wanna have that on that agenda, get it taken care of this year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like in reading, then you don't, then it doesn't have to wait till January?
Yeah, 'cause then, yeah, we wanna do some other stuff then, I read, carry...
Okay.
I don't think Peggy's aware yet.
So those will be the, the items for that agenda. And then the other thing I wanna make you aware of, some of you have been calling me on the cell phone, you know, Phil has called a couple of times. Cell phone I have from the city doesn't work in the building. I can't, we, it breaks up, and I don't know what the deal is. I was talking, talking with my wife today, and little shoot from, with my cell phone, we had no problems, sitting right at the desk, so I don't know what the problem is. But I would recommend you always call the office on the, you know, on the regular phone, and if I'm not here, well, then they'll, they'll let you know that, and that means I'm probably not in the building, and the cell phone will work if you call me as a follow-up, but if you're gonna call me when I'm at the office, call on your office phone, 'cause otherwise it's kinda useless.
Unless you're right by the window.
Right.
Okay.
That's it?
Is that all?
Yep.
Second, motion by Keister, second by Dunleavy to adjourn, all of, no, got all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.